Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Monday, March the 2nd, and this is the Board of Education's work session for Cabarrus County. Just want to welcome each and every one of you here tonight. Thank you for coming out. We have several people that we want to recognize, and we want to recognize our Student Resource Office, School Resource Officer, Randy Buckwell from Mount Pleasant High School. He's out here to keep you folks orderly.[41.12][41.12](Laughter). We have our Bill McLaughlin from Mosley Architects here tonight, and glad that he could come out tonight, and a number of folks from Wolf Meadow Elementary, and we appreciate you showing up en masse. We see you're green, thank you again. Before we get too far going, far on, I'd like to take a moment of silence. We lost two very important people to our district this past, past couple of weeks. We lost Mrs. Cynthia Cersey Stone. She was a bus driver at Hickory Ridge Middle School, and she passed away on February the 7th. And then we lost Trenton Davis, a student at Cox Mill Elementary School who passed away on February the 19th. Please join me in a moment of silence as we pray for their families.[95.11][95.11](Mumbling) Amen, thank you. All right. I'd like to call for motions to approve the March 2nd work session agenda. Wait a minute. Got a motion, but I think I have a possible agenda revision. Is anyone want to make any revisions, revisions to the agenda?
I would.
Okay.
I'd like to, if we could, discuss a new public relations position that was posted, and the only reason is, we've gone through this budget, we're going through this budget process, and it seems as if lots of areas are coming to present their needs for the following year, but it wasn't anything about public relations, but it may be coming up. We're not finished with that process. But I just asked some questions, and I think that it was recommended to me that we talk about it at an open session meeting.
All right. Vince makes a motion. Do I have a second to Mr. Phillips?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Phillips has a second to that? All in favor, or any discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's been carried, so that will be added to the end of the agenda. Item 5.07. Are there any other motions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to have us consider, let's discuss, the inclement weather policy, kind of review, I mean, the last eight or 10 school days have been missed. We've had a lot of folks out there that have shared opinions with us. I think just an opportunity for us to review where we're at, this 185 days and hours, and discuss that, see where we're, just review what those days are, so we all understand that, and then possibly discuss, do we, just review, or opportunity to look at our weather policy and procedures going down the road.
All right. Mr. Walter would like to discuss the inclement weather process and policy. Is there a second to this?
Second.
Mr. Harrison seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries, so well, that'll be 5.08, and we'll discuss those two items at the end of our meeting tonight.[248.65][248.65](Mumbling). Moving on. Oh, yes, now we need to approve the, thank you, I'm just, let's set the agenda, and I heard David Harrison say he's moved to set it.
Second.
Rob Walter seconds. Any discussion? None received. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda's been set, and now move to Section 4 on reports, and our first report is the year-round school proposal for Wolf Meadow Elementary. Come on up, Dr. Van Heukelum and Dr. Auerbach, if you care to come forward.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Auerbach's going to join us here tonight, and as you can see, he has a large contingent of staff members who are eager to discuss with you the prospects of a year-round calendar. They've been talking about that for several months, investigating the idea of a year-round calendar. I want to applaud Dr. Auerbach and his team for wanting to do what's right for kids. In our discussions with him and his leadership team, it's evident to me that they believe this is a strategy to close achievement gaps for students at Wolf Meadow Elementary School, that they see this as a good thing for their school. We're bringing it to you as a report tonight, for you to discuss and ask questions and get some understanding around what is a year-round school, what does it look like, what is it intended to do, et cetera. Then we plan to continue to explore that idea over the summer, the remainder of this school year, the summer, and bring it back to you in October as an action item, if our due diligence leads us to believe that this is an appropriate solution for Wolf Meadow Elementary School. That way, it would fall into the cycle with our magnet schools and our other choice options for Cabarrus County schools. But I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Auerbach. He's going to kind of talk through a PowerPoint that you've had an opportunity to already preview, and discuss his rationale and his passion, I think is an appropriate word, for this opportunity for his students and staff.
All right. Good evening. So really, year-round school is what it says on the agenda, but we're really talking about overcoming summer learning loss, and I want to talk a little bit about that as we get started. So before we get started, this little diagram that you've probably seen before, taking what we know, what we believe, and what we want, and putting all that together to make decisions on how we do things here. So we're going to go through that same process here. So what do we know? A little background about Wolf Meadow and our demographics. We are one of the highest free and reduced lunch populations in Cabarrus County, over 80%. Last year, this year's numbers are a little harder to exactly pin down, since we're a school-wide free and reduced lunch, all of our students get free and reduced lunch here. But we're one of the highest free and reduced lunch populations. Demographic-wise, about 15% of our students qualify for exceptional children, and about 22% are limited English proficient. We currently have the highest non-white, or highest percentage of non-white students in the county, so about 66% of our students are non-white at Wolf Meadow Elementary as So how are we doing at Wolf Meadow? I think we're doing a great job. Here, this, this shows the test scores over the last few years, and what this chart shows you is what our percent proficient was in the tested areas those years, and the difference from the Cabarrus County Schools' average. And some of the tests have changed over the last couple of years, and the cutoffs and the way that all of that's been done, so we, this just shows you the difference from the county average. And you can see, we've closed the gap in some areas, some areas the gap's got a little larger, but overall, over the last few years, we've made some gains, but we're still below where we want to be. We're still below the county average in percent proficient, and that's not good enough for me, and it's not good enough for my teachers either, and they want better. We have met growth the last years. This is an EVA slide that you've seen probably in some other reports, but two years ago, we exceeded, we were blue, we were in the blue, exceeded expected growth, and last year we met the expected growth too, and our EVA, this is fourth and fifth grade data, basically. How are we doing, not just academics, but also our school culture? So this shows us our enrollment and the number of office referrals that we've had over the last four years, and our suspension rate. And the way the suspensions are reported, it's per 100 students, that way it's, numbers don't look overinflated for large schools versus small schools, they put it out to that, that formula there, per 100 students. So you can see, 2010, 11, before, before I was there, 37.7 per 100 students, and we've dropped it down, and through the first semester, we're down to 4.14, out-of-school suspensions per 100 students. So, and that's a direct relation to the, the good work that the teachers are doing, and building the culture in the classroom and in the school, keeping students engaged and keeping them in school. And this data, I think, is even more powerful right here. This is how we're closing our achievement gap during the school year. I've showed you what it looks like year to year at the testing, but this is from this school year. And again, the same tested areas that we're talking about there, and this is our Discovery Ed Benchmark Test that we take at the beginning of the year, except for second and third grade reading because of the state testing, we don't do that at the beginning of the year. But every other grade and subject, we take it at the beginning of the year, November, February-ish, and then at the end of the year, we take the EOGs. So the same way that we're looking at the data, the beginning of the year, what our percent proficient was, and then the difference from Cabarrus County Schools' average. And you can see that we were, well, you can't see that, but we were pretty much at the bottom in all the areas at the beginning of the year. 8.9% of our fifth graders in math, you know, passed the beginning of your benchmark, which was 22% below there. But as we've moved through the year, we've closed the gap in almost every area, and in some places, we're above average, above the county average in the percent proficient already. Again, that goes back to the hard work that the teachers are doing, and the hard work that the students are, are putting in to grow that much throughout the year. And we, we've seen this trend data over the last couple of years, that we, our students make tremendous growth from the beginning of the year until the end of the year. So overall, we've made tremendous progress in our proficiency scores, our student growth, and our student behavior the last few years, in spite of the summer learning loss. But we also feel that Wolf Meadow's never going to be able to get the desired results that we want if we organize our school the same way that every other school does here. We need to think a little differently about our school. So what is summer learning loss? Because I've said it a few times, and I want to make sure everyone understands exactly what we're talking about. It's the term for the regression of students' academic progress from the end of one school year to the beginning of the next year, typically 10 weeks later, when they come back. Many students that come back, their reading levels have dropped, their math levels significantly lower than they were in May of the previous year. So it's thinking about throughout the year, we take three steps forward, and then over the summer, we take two steps back. So I think most principals would say they see this in places there, but I can say at Wolf Meadow, we see it pretty drastically. What the research says about summer learning loss, the increasing gap in test scores between children from families of high and low socioeconomic status over the elementary school period, thus accrued entirely from the differential gains they made when school was closed, that is summer learning months. So what, a lot of research shows that students in poverty, or the higher poverty schools, see it even more because of that summer gap that happens. And the out-of-school learning opportunities in the summers can explain an important portion of why that gap happens there. Well, that's research, but this is Wolf Meadow data right here, and I want to talk about this more specifically. So what we did, my staff, our leadership team took test scores from the end of last year, our end-of-grade scores. In the lower grades, K2 or K3, we took their M-class reading 3D that they take at the end of the year, and then we take it again at the beginning of the year. In the upper grades, we looked at our EOG proficiency levels. And then we looked again at what they had at the beginning of this year. So out of, out of our students, 14%, when they came back in August, actually had a higher level than they were than when they finished the end of the, last year. So the students here, if they were reading at a Level C at the end of kindergarten, they might have come back, they were reading at a Level D. So 14% of our students were actually higher than they were when they left. 22% of our students came back and were on the same level in reading or math. So they were at a D at the end of kindergarten, they came back at the beginning of your assessment, they were still at a D. Or they were at a Level 2 in fourth grade math, when they came back and took their beginning of the year math, you know, benchmark, they were at a Level 2 there as well. But 64%, the number in red, 64% of our students in their assessments were lower than they were when they just left school two months before. So almost two-thirds of our school was at least one level lower again, or couldn't go any further down, you know, if it was already at the bottom there and it couldn't go. That's a pretty significant chunk there. And this also is not just our bottom 64% of our students, so I don't want you to think that it's, we're just talking about that. These are students from across levels. Students that maybe were above grade level at the end of second grade reading, and when they came back to third grade, they were either right on or maybe had dropped a little below grade level. So this, this data sprinkled all through the whole school there. But again, a significant chunk, if we're having to take this much time to teach 64% of our kids just to get them back where they were at the end of the year before. So what we believe, to overcome summer learning loss, there's, there's two options that we, that we've talked about and we thought about. Summer school or adding student days to the summer, which, you know, traditional summer school, if you think about it, was almost like a punishment, oh, no, I got to go to summer school, and even the Read to Achieve Camp, even though it was awesome and everyone had a great time, it was great, it was wonderful, but it's, wasn't, they weren't too excited to have to go to summer reading camp at first, parents or students, and, and again, that was a state thing, no, not us, but ours, Cabarrus County's was wonderful. But it's also costly to add more weeks to the year. Every, every time we add more weeks to a school year, we do that, then everything we do, we have to pay more for that. The other, another option was having a balanced calendar, which is, we're talking about year-round school, but it's also called a balanced calendar, and all students and staff would benefit from this because of the way the calendar would be structured, and I, I believe that this can be done for minimal costs to the school system, too. So if we think differently about Wolf Meadow's calendar, and we pilot a balanced calendar in conjunction with the current initiatives that we do, I think we can close that proficiency gap and get Wolf Meadow where it needs to be. And I think what's important about this, too, is, I'm not coming up here to say that a balanced calendar or a year-round calendar is the silver bullet that's going to solve anything. I've never worked at a year-round school, have no affiliation with one, I'm not, I'm not making any money off that. But I truly believe that if we do this in conjunction with the great things that my teachers already do, we can make a significant difference going forward, because they do great work there every day, and they push so hard, and then we lose it all in the summer. So we got to continue keeping to do the great things we're doing. We're not changing the curriculum, we're not changing everything else we're doing. We're going to add to this to make it work even better. So there's a lot of potential benefits to doing this. Supplemental learning opportunities during intercession. So intercession is the term for the times in between the quarters. So I'm going to show you a sample calendar based on next year's calendars, where there'd be about a two-and-a-half to three-week break at the end of every nine weeks. So we would do the first nine weeks, and we'd have two-and-a-half, three weeks. We'd do the second nine weeks, we'd finish before Christmas, the three-week Christmas break. Come back to the third quarter, nine weeks, have about a two-and-a-half to three-week spring break, and we still end the school year, when everybody else ends on June 10th. So during those intercessions, though, we have the opportunity to have kids, have students come in, and do some enrichment intervention and remediation camps with them, and do some different things. So we're, we're getting more days of contact with our students, but it's not necessarily more days of school. They're not all required, it's not, you know, oh, I've got to go to school the whole year round. Some families are going to want to do it, some families are not going to want to do that. But we have the opportunity to do some more stuff with our kids, instead of just doing it after school, when they've already been in school for seven and a half hours. Professional development can be done during intercession, too, which means a less loss of instructional time and for teachers out of the classroom. Currently, the way the calendar law is set up from the, from the state, we, we don't have a lot of options with our professional development days. If I'd have known, I'd have planned a bunch over the last two weeks, but I didn't know we were going to have all those days. So during, having these breaks every, every nine weeks, we can bring teachers in and do professional development with them, planning with them, and work with them throughout the year, because typically, the way things work, we front-load a bunch of stuff on teachers beginning of the year, we go teach for nine, 10 months, and then we have a couple of days to clean up at the end of the year. And there's a few workdays in there to get some things done, but not enough that needs to be done. So at a school like Wolf Meadow, we use Title I Staff Development Funds to help hire, to hire substitutes sometimes, to, to keep the class running, so the teachers can do professional development. Well, we've got great subs out there, but none of our subs are as good as my teachers. So every day that the teachers are not in the classroom, it's hurting us there. Some research says teachers spend as much as a month reviewing last year's lessons, while students require almost no review at the start of a year-round session. I'd say our teachers spend more than a month reviewing for some of our students. Again, some of our students, it takes almost to the middle of the year to get their reading levels or math levels back where they were at the end of last year. It's actually, and there's an interesting article here, I won't go through the whole thing, but it's actually a cost savings, it's a cost savings for the taxpayers to move to a balanced calendar. In New York, they real, they did a study and saw that New York was wasting billions of dollars a year paying people to go back and teach things that kids had already learned the year before to get them caught back up. So if every year, we're spending months and quarters reteaching things they've already learned, we're spending that money for teachers and run, run schools there. So it's actually a, you know, fiscal benefit to do this. The Wolf Meadow PTO Board on the back row unanimously and the staff overwhelmingly support the change, which says it's increasing the ownership there. I did not require anyone to be here, they're, they're here because they believe in it, and they, they own it. And I'll show you some data from their survey that they filled out a couple of months ago. There's also a potential increase in community partnerships during the intercessions. I've already met with the Boys and Girls Club, and have started, started creating a list of other after-school, summer camp, different types of people that I can work with, to plan some different things during the intercessions, to use the school or to partner with the school to help build those relationships, to help the students as well. It's the same number of student days, it's only balanced across the year, so it's not that I'm adding a ton more days. Like one student said, "Do I have to come to school all summer now, Dr. A?" I said, "No, it's the same number of days." It's just, we've got to be balanced out a little better. There's more breaks for students, too, which I think is another benefit. More planned breaks, when they know they're going to have that time off, as opposed to, again, the last two weeks. So if you've ever worked in a school or been there, the spring can sometimes get a little, a little stressful sometimes, and spring fever hits, and when is spring break coming? When is spring break coming? And having, knowing you're going to have a longer spring break to kind of decompress to come back is great. Having a fall break, which, which we don't have, you know, in a traditional calendar, is nice, too. We had a two-week Christmas break, or winter break this year, and it was great for staff and students. Everyone enjoyed having a, a nice solid two weeks this year. Potential benefits, obviously, higher student achievement because of the decrease in the summer learning loss. You know, we wouldn't be here talking about it if we didn't think this could help the overall achievement there. Along with that, less teacher stress, burnout, and teacher turnover. Again, that's springtime, when everything's kind of going, crazy weather, and the, the stress for the year, there's a lot there for everybody. And I think that this could help, help decrease the stress and decrease the turnover. It also gives us a chance to, for school branding and specialization. I think, you know, and that Cabarrus County's done a lot of things over the last couple of years to give individual schools their own flavor, whether it's academies at the high school or certain magnet options, and we brand, I mean, Wolfgang's on everything. So we've branded Wolfgang, but this would give us our, our own little thing for Wolfgang to be known for, and I think that, that, you know, every school has their thing, they want to hang their hat on, and this is the thing that my staff and I want to hang our hat on there. It also possibly opens up the, the chances for an open enrollment choice, like some of our other schools, to give other families the, the opportunity to possibly choose to enroll there. You know, we're a smaller school facility-wise, we don't have a lot of space, so I'm not going to say we have hundreds of seats open, because we're, we're getting close there, but as we go through this, if there's certain families that feel that this isn't best for them, or they really don't want to be involved, and they, they decide to leave Wolf Meadow, then that does create a little space that we could fill, you know, backfill in with other families that want to be there, to keep our school full, again, not overflowing, but keeping it full there, but also letting other people that want to get on board and get, get on, get with this would be great, too. So in January, after we, we started talking about this, the whole staff was sent an anonymous survey. 68 out of 85 staff members responded. This went to cafeteria workers, custodians, clerical, teachers, teacher assistants, Title I tutors, everybody. 84% of the staff agreed with the change for 2015, 16, or were willing to try it. 13% said they weren't sure or agreed with it, but they weren't sure how it would work for their personal lives, and 3% did not agree with making the change. Obviously, these numbers would be a little different, because we're talking about, you know, going forward, not next year, the year after now, but even then, going forward for next year, 84% agreed. Parents were surveyed in February. The survey went out on Thursday, February 12th. About half of them, over 250 or so, returned the next day, and then we didn't have school for a week, and we've, we've been trying to get as many of the surveys back in to have as best we can the data. So making phone calls last week and trying to get as much in, we've had about 77% of the surveys returned from families. We only sent them through, to K through fourth grade students, too, because fifth grade, fifth graders will be gone, they, they didn't have a dog in this fight. So 78% of the families agreed with the change for the school year, or weren't sure but willing to try it, and thought it sounded like a good idea. 12% were not sure or agreed, but it might not work for their personal lives, and 10% did not agree with making the change with the, the parent survey. And actually, I brought a copy of it for you to see, too, and on the back is a copy of the proposed calendar we sent home, and the current adopted school calendar for next year, too, so for you guys to be able to see that. So this is exactly what we sent home as well. So you can see from the surveys, the staff, you know, to get 85% of, or 84% of a, a school to agree on something and buy into something is, I feel is a pretty good number, and even some of the, since then, some of those fam, or some of the teachers that put they weren't sure have come and said, "You know what? Now that I've got my minor out, I'm good to go." With the families, this, the same thing, again, 23% still not come back in, but we've talked with people that weren't sure, and trying to make sure we answer those questions, and that's something we'll keep, keep doing throughout this process, to make sure that everyone really understands. Some parent comments on the survey, like, "What about Saturdays?" You know, they, they kind, some parents maybe missed exactly what we were trying to, to do with that there. But you can see the majority of the families agree with this, this change for Wolf Meadow, too. So on the survey, we did have a spot for parents to put questions, concerns, and, you know, we are working to actively investigate and address those concerns to see what we can figure out. So I pulled some of the comments from, from the surveys, so. But having two kids on different school schedules would be hard for me, as far as the schedule itself, and financially regarding having to pay for extra care because of them being on different schedules. Different schedules, they are different, but they're not completely different, and we'll, we'll show you that, too. It's not a completely different schedule, a hun, almost three-quarters of the days are exactly the same, so you'll, you'll see that as well, too. But also, with the intercession camps offered at school during these weeks, there can be enrichment, there can be different things going on to help offset the, where is my child going to be, and what are they going to be doing? Could be free, could be low-cost, so some of these things could be taken care of by ourselves there as well. I'll also say this same concern, I know some parents that do have kids at different, or students at different levels that said, "Yeah, it's going to be different, but it's going to be, it's going to actually be a good thing. Now I can spend some time while my middle schooler is in school and my elementary schooler's not in school, because I have two different kids, I, it's a time for me to spend maybe more personal time with my one child." Vice versa, when the other one's in school, the other's not, we can spend a little bit more quality time that way, too. Vacations were already planned for the end of July, and I told families, I understand that, because we were coming in, we would work with that, especially the first year, until people kind of get used to that, which is not really an issue, no. One family felt, "My children are A and B honor roll students, and I don't feel that they need to have my child in a year-round school." And with our data, when we looked at it, it wasn't, there were honor roll students that, again, were making, having that summer learning loss. So, you know, I'm not going to say that it, every honor roll student was having summer learning loss, too, but some of them were not, were falling back, and we could push them even further. So maybe, maybe this could be the difference in being on the A/B honor roll and the A honor roll. You know, maybe we, we move a little further that way, or even growing, making straight As forever, kind of thing. My only concern is after, care after school. Right now, my son attends Boys and Girls Club, or After School Summer Program. Due to their income, they pay a reduced rate, however, it allows me to be able to afford the program. He said, "I've already met with the Boys and Girls Club," and actually, one of their big pillars that the Boys and Girls Club works for is overcoming summer learning loss. So they were excited about the opportunity to, to partner up and do some different things to try and help the students, because we have, they even send a bus to our school every day after school, because, so we have a good number of our students that attend the Boys and Girls Club, so they were one of the first agencies I reached out to, to talk about this, too. There were also lots of positive comments on the survey results, too. "My son finds joy in learning, so I feel the change should do no harm. In fact, I'm happy about it." "As a child, I attended year-round school in Myrtle Beach. It worked well for both myself and parents." I even have staff members that attended year-round school, growing up in Raleigh and different places, and they're like, "Oh, that was great, we loved it." "I strongly believe this will help my child tremendously. He struggles with retaining information learned, and during the summer, he takes so many steps back that by the beginning of the school year, he's not on grade level." "I'm willing to make the change. It will mean adjustments will have to be made, but completely able to make an adjustment. And any step in an effort to improve children's learning is a step in the right direction." So associated potential costs, and none of these numbers are exact, exact numbers. There could possibly be a transportation cost if, if we were to do an opt-out policy and, and transportation was provided, that would be a decision that has to be made to determine if there's a transportation cost. If some other districts don't provide transportation or don't provide an opt-out policy, they do these, so if there isn't buses to send students somewhere else, then there's not a transportation cost there. Child nutrition, you know, Dr. Probst and I have talked, and still kind of working out some things, but she estimates it no more than $20,000 for the associated child nutrition cost, because we wouldn't be, in the, the beginning of the year, when our part was in school and everybody else wouldn't be, there could be some extra costs getting the food in, where we're not getting bundle or bulk discounts, or not discounts, but bulk, yeah, different menus, things like that. So, there, there's a potential for some, some costs there. So, what, what do we want? We want, we would love to make a bold move to make a minor shift to our, to a balanced calendar. To reduce our summer learning loss, to strengthen our community partnerships, to provide additional employment opportunities for our own teachers and teacher assistants, and to provide another choice for Cabarrus County Schools' parents and school options. So, what does the balanced calendar look like? So, on the yellow flyers that Dr. Lauter passed out to you, it shows the calendar, the proposed calendar, if it was, if this was to happen next year, and what the current calendar for next year looks like. And you can see that... So, on this calendar, our first day for staff to come back would be July 16th, so a full month before the other teachers come back, and the first day for students would be July 22nd. And you can see the first quarter goes, and there, at the end, on September 24th would be the last day of the first quarter, and there'd be about a two-and-a-half week break there. The line through there would be where the intercessions would be available, and I didn't really know what to code it, so I just called it a no-work-no-pay. Basically, those are the summer days now being put in there. So, for, for teachers that are paid on the yearly calendar, the way it is, a certain number of days they have to work, those days would not be included in there. But, that's where the camps could run, or teachers could earn extra money through fund, different grants, or Title One funding to pay for, to work that couldn't be paid while they're actually, already being paid, so that way. And then you go through, you know, I think November's the same, when you look across there. December, you know, the winter break starts at the same time, and then, when we come back from winter break in January, you could see there was one more week of intercession available at that time. February was the same. March, March, there was a week of intercession before what the current spring break was, and a couple of days after, so about an extra week right there around spring break. And then, it ends the same time, at we, the same last day of school for everybody. So, if you typically take a vacation, you know, the week after school gets out, everybody gets out at the same time, and then there's about a five-to-six week summer vacation there. So, it's a shorter summer, but it's still a somewhat of a summer vacation. So, when we look at it, there's 136 days that are the same, 136 student days are the same on these calendars. So, it's not a completely different schedule. There's 22 days where the year-round, or the balanced calendar students would be in school, that the others, that the regular calendar would not be. Basically, that's the beginning of the school year, in July, July, beginning of August. And then there's 22 days where the balanced calendar students, Wolf Meadow students, would be out, where the other students would be, the regular students would be in, and those are the, the intercession days typically. So, basically, in conclusion, as far as Wolf Meadow staff is concerned, you know, if we, Cabarrus County Schools really wants to be the top, the top 10 districts in this state, and to get there, Wolf Meadow's got to help do our part and get us where we need to be up in the top 10. And we, I truly believe philosophically, fundamentally, to my core, that this is a change that can help bring all of our students further. Our high-achieving students can go even higher, our low-achieving students can close the gap, and it can help students, staff, and everybody at Wolf Meadow. So, with, with that, what questions do you have?
Thank you, Dr. Arubak, for your presentation, for this compelling idea. Board members, I will open this up to you folks, so if, I'll start at Mr. Fur's side, and if you have any questions, please direct them to Mr., to Dr. Arubak.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you and your staff, and the, and the parents for, for being here tonight, and showing the support. Wolf Meadow is, is, holds a dear place to me. That's where my kids went to school before we moved. And I actually don't tell anyone, but I moved to Harrisburg and left my kids at Wolf Meadow. But anyway. And not many people wanted to do that, but anyway, that's good. No, I really, you know, at first, I, you know, I was against it, because I'm old, and I believe in, you know, being a traditional school. But, you know, you, you got to, sometimes you got to venture out, and you got to think outside the box, and, and, you know, you got to do what's best for the kids. And, and even more than that, you're doing something for your staff. And I know that sometimes we put so much emphasis on kids, 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 which is totally very important, that's why we're here. But I think a lot of times, we, we don't do enough for the staff. So, like I said, I appreciate what you're trying to do.
Thank you.
Dr. Har, Mr. Harrison, you'll take that.
Once again, I'm a doctor, only for five seconds or so, at a time. No, again, I said in an email, I hope you got it, that I wanted to commend the staff, the teachers, and the parents for all the hard work that obviously went into things. From the, one of the slides indicated that a lot of the in-school suspensions and referrals had been turned around, and that obviously is a great deal of work, and I just want to commend everybody's effort for that. I did want to ask, or I'll just say one thing. Academically, I'm on board with you as to the, the worth of a year-round program. This is anecdotal, but my own daughter can still speak the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag in German for the three years that she spent at a year-round magnet school. And that might, all the German she can speak, but by golly, she can, but what I'm getting at is that the retention is there. The, the, the lessons that she learned were, you know, more deeply embedded in it, and so I'm personally convinced that year-round works. Are, are you saying in your presentation here that, I know you're not speaking for other elementary schools around the county, but would they have some of the same needs? Or are you saying that the needs at Wolf Meadow are especially high to make this kind of decision and go in this kind of direction? I'm trying to be very open-ended about that. I know you're speaking for Wolf Meadow, but...
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak for any other school, I haven't looked at their data that way. If I had to guess, I would say that there's some similar data, maybe not to the extent ours is, but Dr. Ben Huglum's here, he can, he can, he will be happy to...
Maybe he can speak German at us, I don't know.
He'll be happy to take that one.
I, I think nationally, the, the data would suggest that for our lowest-income students, they fall back in the summer. That is a common phenomenon.
More so than...
More so than their middle-class peers.
So, therefore, a larger concentration of that demographic in this school indicates a higher need?
That's right. So, any school in America, I would say, that has 60, 70, 80%, the higher that percentage is, the more they're going to struggle with summer learning loss. So, you know, like Adam presented, you have a couple of ways to attack that, which is one, summer school, right? Summer bridge programs, summer camp programs that extend the school year, that inevitably cost more money. This approach is, costs less money, and really shortens the gaps between when I stop learning and when I start back up learning. Instead of 10 weeks in the summer, I have multiple three-to-four week gaps that I have to overcome, so. And then you have the enrichment in the middle. So, to answer your question, yes, the same thing would be true at most, at many schools.
Okay, thanks. Have, you know, we've lost so much time in the schools, or days lost, in this terrible weather we've had for the last two weeks. How would those weather conditions and days lost be accommodated in, in this schedule? I mean, I'm sure that's in here, but what would be a typical scenario different than the rest of the school system, in terms of what the Wolf Meadow parents would do differently than, than others? Or would you simply take the day off in the next intercession?
I think we'd have some options, you know, depending on how it works, if, you know, if it was a week where we added a Saturday school, and we, you know, just fixed it that way to, to offset it, or if it was a forgiven day. But I, I will say, especially the last two weeks, you know, I've thought about it a lot, that if, if, you know, if this, if this calendar was ours for next year, you know, offsetting the intercession week, you know, our students would be back in school, we wouldn't have lost those days. It would have been an easier fix there, to say, "We can just go to school those days there," and make it up that way. But ultimately, I'm sure Dr. Lauter and Dr. Shepherd would do it, you know, help figure that out. I don't think I would be the type of...
Okay. And how would you handle teacher workdays differently than the, the rest of the system? How would, how would the teacher workdays at Wolf Meadow?
It'd be the same number, you know, the same number.
Same number, sure.
You know, and a lot of them are the same. When, when you looked at it, you know, the beginning of the year days are obviously different, because our year would start a month earlier. But I think the, the four days, the beginning of the school year, are pretty standard, kind of around what you do everywhere. You know, get those first four days back, getting everything going. And then some of the other days and the half-days could still be the same half-days, when we do the early release for professional development. We, we could be able to work those out the same way as well, too.
I just want to commend you on your staff's commitment, too, and dedication and support for the idea. It would be a wonderful, it would be a great thing. You'd all see your own personal goals met and achieved. You know, this would give, this would empower, I think, the staff, to a large extent, to bring about the goals of the whole school. So, congratulations to you all. I hope it, you know, keeps getting gelled, and, and some of these additional ideas get worked out, and I look forward to continuing this discussion and consideration of the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter.
Well, as a parent of two younger students, I can certainly agree that we have a big issue with the summer learning loss, and I commend you for trying to address that with this proposal. And I saw that the referrals that we have that have gone down, that's because you put that in your school improvement plan, is that correct? So, that's been a focused area of attention?
Yeah, we, we've focused on it a lot over the last few years, and I think that there's a lot of, a lot of good reasons why that is. I think the, again, the number-one reason is the, all the people in the green shirts behind me, they do a great job in their class, planning, engaging lessons, keeping kids, students interested in what they're doing, so they, I know that voice, so they can, so they can stay engaged in class and do stuff. So, when students are engaged and they're learning, and they're, they're finding success, they don't find ways to come up to the office, too. And I think some different things we put into place, structures, and certain positions have helped make that happen, too. And I hope to see that number keep going down.
Well, I'd like to see your, the, see the summer learning loss put in your, your school improvement plan, as another way to support what you're doing here. What exactly was the day to start with the school calendar year start?
Well, when I made this calendar, you know, it was based off of the 2015-16 calendar. I haven't had a chance to, to look forward to the 16-17 calendar to see that. I can tell you, I like to start school on a Wednesday.
On this school, on this calendar here that you're showing us, when's the first day of school? Is that the 22nd of July? Is that what it is?
July 22nd. If we, if this were the calendar we would go for, for next year, would start, the first day for students would be July 22nd.
Okay. And going back to Jason, I know you do a lot of professional development stuff over the summer. Does that, would that interfere with, with his, his teachers not be able to take part in part of that, if they're in class, or is that...
Yeah, if they were, if they were in session, obviously, they couldn't participate in district-wide training. Much of our training is run through lead teachers. We, we bring in teachers from the school, train them, and then they go out and deliver that training to their staff. Adam has lead teachers at his building, so we would rely on that structure to make sure that Wolf Meadow stays on target with the district-wide trainings that we deliver across the district. So, I don't see that as a problem.
Thank you. Talk to me a little bit more about the transportation. What have you, what have you found, found, I don't quite understand, you had a, the chart there, and you had something about a $40,000 a bus? What is...
I think one of the first questions, that, one of the questions that need to be answered in this proposal going forward is, if you're a, a family at Wolf Meadow and you don't want to attend a year-round school, can you opt out? And if you can opt out, do we then, is the onus of transportation on the school system? Or do we just say, "Yes, you can opt out, you can drive to XYZ school"? So, the, the cost of the transportation is going to be dependent on how many family, first, if we choose to say, "We do, we do transport you as a school system." Many districts do not. And then the next question is, how many families say, "Yes, I don't want to attend a year-round school. I'm going to get on a bus and go to Irvin Elementary, for example, or another school in that area." So, it's hard to predict. The cost you saw here is kind of the general cost per bus, based on 30 kids on a bus.
Sir, is that a question, a legal question, would we have to provide transportation?
We could look at that more closely, but I believe because we would be providing transportation to the year-round school, we'd be meeting our obligation there.
In the estimate, the $40,000 estimate came from our Transportation Department, based on the estimate of what it costs to, for the bus, the gas, the mileage, you know, a driver for one year, running a bus, you know, elementary buses, for elementary students, you can generally hold up to, I think, 60 or 72 students.
So, that's running a bus for someone who wants to go outside, outside the Wolf Meadow...
Outside of the Wolf Meadow attendance zone.
But if it's just the Wolf Meadow attendance zone, there's no change in the...
Correct, correct.
Okay, well, that's, I didn't quite understand.
Yeah, the, the transportation cost would only be for, if we ran an opt-out run to go outside of our district.
Okay. If we had an open enrollment school, how many spaces do you actually have over there? I mean, it seems to be that you're fairly close to capacity as it is.
Yeah, possibly about 50. And, you know, that will ultimately, ultimately be decided, too, by how many families opt out. So, if, you know, a lot of 5th grade families choose to opt out to go to another school, and I can see that I have more seats there, it would be there. I don't have a lot of empty space, you know, like some of, well, not like any of our schools anymore, but we don't, so I don't have a bunch of empty rooms sitting there to add a bunch there. But there could be some from the opt-out part.
But you're saying 80 to 90% of the folks are in favor of this anyway, so it wouldn't be a very large amount?
I, I do not think many families would opt out.
Okay, what's the last? How do you, how do you, how do you sell this to the students, again? Those are the ones that their friends are, on summer break, and they're, they're coming.
You got three weeks at Christmas, when all your friends go back, you get an extra week. You get three weeks at spring break, when all your friends go back, you're, you know, you get three weeks in the fall. You get one every season.
I guess you, once you experience it, I would imagine that...
And that's one of the other common things in the research that we've looked at, and people that I've talked to, that, that have been involved in a balanced calendar, a year-round school, whether it's as a student, as a, a parent, or working at school, they love it. They love the, the change in the calendar. And again, some of my staff have participated in year-round, either as a student, a parent, or a faculty member, and again, just the, the feel of it was great, too.
Have you talked to other schools in North Carolina that have year-round? What are, what are they telling you? What are they...
Yes, I am, when I first started investigating this, I have a couple colleagues that, in Union County, that I got my doctorate with, that were at year-round schools, and I started talking to them. And my one friend is now at a non, he's at a traditional calendar school, he was moved to a different school, and he's like, "Oh, you're," literally, he said, "You lucky dog, if you're going to be on year-round again, you'll love it." He wishes he was still on a, on a year-round calendar.
Do we have any data from those schools that show...
Dr. Naterson, I tried to find schools that are similar to Wolf Meadow in size, demographics, things like that, and to try and find the data that correlated. But there really wasn't, there really weren't any schools that kind of lined up exactly like Wolf Meadow, to be able to say, "Well, this school's very similar to our population and size and demographics to, to show that."
But you really need that? You're really just trying to show data that the summer, summer learning loss is, is, there's a significant effect to go, to make this step forward?
Correct.
All right. My, the other, really, just the general comment is what says more than this presentation, is you've got a group of folks here that are here on their own, I mean, they're passionate about these students, and to come here, that says everything to me, so, thank you.
And they're, that, they're the number-one reason that it'll work. I have no doubt that it will work at Wolf Meadow because of them.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Powell, would you like to ask some questions?
Yes, sir, thank you. This was a much better presentation than the one you gave me when I visited, and you pulled me out of the gym when I was playing kickball, but anyway. My, my questions really revolve around the people. If teachers who are not desiring a year-round schedule, will they be given priority to transfer to other schools? Have you been given any assurances of that?
I, I don't know as far as priority.[1711.33] I don't think there's any assurance to that. I mean, that hasn't been a discussion here, but I, on the original timeline before we decided to, you know, adjust it for the, the following year, we wanted it all to line up because the intent forms are just going out now and the transfer period's opening up. So, and my staff, you know, we've talked about it for months, like if they know that they're somewhere they want to go, want to be a part of, they've started kind of looking at that. And I think that, again, I know it's a very few, small number, but I feel that we're a large enough system, there's eight, there'd be 18 other elementary schools in this district on a traditional calendar that the few people that did want to be somewhere else would, I feel very confident would be taken care of.
My next question would be if there's other teachers in the district that also would like to come to a year-round, would that obviously be?
Yeah.
Available to them?
I think so. Again, kind of going with the reason to, to try and make it before the transfer period opened was if people knew we were going to year-round or the balanced calendar, they would probably want to come. And I would definitely look at them, you know, when, for whatever openings I may possibly have. I know, I've even got emails already from people that don't work in the Bexar County, we heard about you might be on a year-round, I'd love to talk. And I was like, I don't have anything yet, but I know that the word's been out there as we've been investigating that it could be a recruiting tool for Wolfmeadow and for Cabarrus County schools too.
Well, I'm impressed by the calendar. It was a little, little different than the one you showed me before, that was a work-in progress, but I know this was, had to be a bear to create, but it's probably only more complicated by transportation schedule that, where you might operate buses on a completely different schedule from everybody else. Has that been part of the discussion about you guys kind of have your own buses and your drivers are yours and maybe the TABD kind of thing comes back or?
No. When I, when we first started investigating it, I, I worked with Doris and Joe at the transportation and to see what associated costs and stuff there might be. Since we're on the early schedule, we're a tier-one school, that, so when we're in session 136 days, when everyone's going to school the same days, things run as normal. The days when we are not in session, when it's our intercession and everyone else is running, since we're the first tier, we just cut that first leg off the, those buses there. But then when we're in session and no one else is, they make up that time. So it's cost neutral from that standpoint because the drivers, I guess the way, and I don't know 100% exactly how it works, but we're either funded by a certain number of buses and drivers and stuff from the state, so since we're still running the same number of days, it was, it wasn't going to be more of a cost that way. Does that, does that make sense?
Okay.
And, you know, Doris and Joe did that, that work, looking at that.
Are you also considering extending the school day? Or, or no? I've read some of the research that you provided in your thing and that was one big piece of it, and I just wondered if that was a, a part of that as well?
We do some of that now. We have a grant through the Academic Learning Center right now that we offer after-school tutoring two days a week. And we have other after-school clubs and enrichment opportunities. And we see some good stuff from them. I'm appreciative of the ALC helping us. We've actually, I've already talked with Terry Chaney and them about possibly if we go to this, helping us with grants and stuff for the intercession instead. Personally, well, professionally, I would prefer to do this opposed to extending the school day after-school stuff. I think that with our, the students, you know, they're there at 7:30, school starts, get out at 2:15. It's a long school day. We already have a longer school day than some other systems run it, so keeping them after-school even longer, they start to wear out a little bit. You know, if our day, if just our school day, our regular school day was extended, then that becomes an issue with transportation overtime and teachers are, you know, paid a certain, so that, that could be an additional cost there. I think also doing the, the intercession remediation and stuff like that dur, during that time instead of after-school also frees up teacher time to, right now, again, two days a week, if they're working one of those after-school tutoring things, that's two days after-school, they can't meet for PLCs and do the planning and the conferences and stuff that they need to do because elementary planning times are shorter and to do, get all this stuff done typically at an elementary school, it's after-school a lot. So that would free up some of those times that we're doing stuff with students to now be open more in the afternoons for those, or some of the other things like our garden club that we run and some other things that are, that are available too.
Okay. And my last question. If a family wants to opt out, will they, have you been told that, where they would give, be given priority for any of the magnet programs?
I don't think, we haven't, we haven't discussed that.
Because that, that would be a way to provide transportation through the magnet hubs and so forth, that maybe we wouldn't have an additional cost possibly?
Yeah.
If they were given priority.
I don't, I know that when we started this process before, when I first started, Dr. Van Huglen was going to.
Okay, so you're, you're saying if I'm a parent at Wolfmeadow and I don't want to attend year-round school, then I get?
And the decision has been made to not provide transportation?
Right.
For those families?
And so when you mean by priority, does that mean automatic placement or does that mean I get a weighted lottery in some way? What would, either any and all, okay. A, so obviously we haven't talked about that, those scenarios, but the way I would see it playing out is you could, you could give that child a, a double weight in the lottery so they have a better chance of getting into the IB or STEM magnet schools because they're all be on a waiting list. Or you could say, nope, you're automatically placed. Personally, just, and again, this is less than 30 seconds of me processing the idea, so don't hold me to this. I'm struggling with the concept of giving them an automatic placement into a magnet school over another family. So I, we'd have to look at it, but in this moment, I'm, I'd struggle with that concept.
My, my general question is, we need to be able to provide transportation to all families. That's just kind of my concern.
Yeah.
And if they, for a variety of reasons, can't participate in year-round, you know, let's troubleshoot that, I guess.
Right. So you're saying if we don't provide transportation, then we got to take care of them in some way?
Right. Which that decision hasn't been made, I guess, so.
That's right.
Maybe it's a little preemptive or premature in my.
No, and I would, I would echo Dr. Van Huglen's thing. I don't, I wouldn't want to give an automatic out because I think there'd be some families that would take the out because this is the unknown, when it would be really good for their child to stay there and try it. And once they got involved, and they'd be like, oh, yeah, this is really good actually. And if it's, I don't say too easy, but if it's automatic, you get out and you never get to know what you, what you want, what's, how good it is, you know?
All right. Ms. Carpenter.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for all your efforts you've put forth. I want to thank all the parents that have come forth and everything that they've done, all the research and everything, they've done it. And I always like thinking out of the box. I think that's wonderful to do that. And so that's the very first thing I want to, to say. And I'd like, for all the concerns that we've seen, we've gotten letters and then you've, and the ones that you've shown, and it seems like one of the things has been the childcare, the ones that, that seems to be one of the concerns that, that was mentioned a couple times, to make sure that that's, that's addressed. And then the concern that has, has come up about if someone does opt out. One of the things that, that's been mentioned, and I've heard it a couple times, about transportation. And everybody knows that's one of my things. And, and most people don't know that, and now, Ms. Attorney, you make sure you correct me because she always does. That is not something we are required to do except if it is an exceptional child or if certain money is attached to it to say we've got to do it. Because most people say, oh, you've got to provide transportation for my child. We do not have to provide transportation. We, we do it, but we are not required to do that. And everybody assumes, yes, you do. And a perfect example of that is we had been for Head Start, but when money got dried up for the Head Start program and we got where we could not provide that, and when budgets got tight, we did not provide transportation for Head Start. And so we're not, you know, they're, they're driving their children to Head Start within a certain radius and then, you know, so that is not something that's done. So that, you know, that is not something that is a give me. So, you know, that is something we need to look at. And so looking at the transportation issue, would like to make sure that we do look at that. And if someone does opt out, do we know what school that that child would go to? And is that, is that school overpopulated at this point? Do you know?
Well, I don't think, you know, that has, it hasn't been determined. I can say that from my perspective, I would, I would hope that the school that we choose would be a school as similar to Wolfmeadow as possible and as similar schedule time, start time, so that, to ensure that if somebody really does want to opt out of Wolfmeadow, it's because of the year-round school. And I don't, I wouldn't want us doing something different to be a backdoor way to get out of Wolfmeadow because they don't want to be there.
I'd like these things.
But that's just my, that's Adam, not Dr.
Well, I mean, I would like these things looked at because in this area, in Harrisburg especially, we've got to really look at the big picture.
We've looked at some and we've looked at where some schools, there, where there was a possible open, or space available for that, close geographically enough to Wolfmeadow and similar that way. And I, I think that that could be, that could be made.
I, I'm, I'm curious to see what it would be because especially in that area, especially looking at the Harrisburg area, all right, there's, do we know, know where we would be?
We don't. The short answer is we don't know where we would, we put that school, going back to Mr. Powell's point, we've got several things to, excuse me, several questions to answer in leading up to that. A, are we providing transportation for opt-out, yes or no? Then that determines, you know, a path that we would have to take. And then if they can opt out, where would they go? To Adam's point, we would probably look for a similar school that starts at the same time as Wolfmeadow, so it's an equal comparative choice, but we haven't answered those questions yet and we would, we need to answer.
And that's, I'd kind of like to know that because we know that we've got a lot of building going over in the Harrisburg area, know that we're going to have a lot of schools that'll be overpopulated. And I'd like to know what that would be. The other question is, and you both may want to step on this one, because again, I remember, and sometimes my memory's not as good as it used to be, Royal Oaks had did this at one time. I would like to see if we can get the data on that, what that was, why they stopped. And if I could get that, I think that would be helpful because their population is a lot like yours. And I think that would be very helpful. And so if we could get that data, it would be very interesting because they're not doing it now, correct?
That's correct.
Maybe you can answer, can you answer that now?
I can answer it now. It's, it's something we have talked about.
But that would be very helpful. Because, and how long they did it and, again, why they stopped.
And I believe they stopped in 2007.
How long they did it and their data. And then, and that's, that's real close, within the same district. So if we could get that data, that, I think that would be very helpful. So again, I think it's, and again, they may, it may be a good reason why. And two, if there was a cost involved with it, what their cost was, I think that'd be very helpful. And again, I want to thank you and thank you parents for that. And I, you can tell that you're very interested in your child's wellbeing and we always appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Dr. Phillips.
Okay. Well, most of the questions I had have been asked, so that's a good thing. I'm, you know, in, in basic agreement with, with what you've already said as to the reasons. And certainly as somebody who's married to a teacher, I know that it would be attractive to use some teachers to have four, three-week or two-week breaks and a, and a five-week break rather than one big long break in the summertime. If it helps you refresh, I think, and, and bring excitement back to the classroom. So, so that's good. My, my major concerns were before this meeting that, you know, I was understanding that you were going to try to start this July. I thought that was too soon. My second concern would be that, you know, that was a great survey to get 77% of the teacher, uh, parents rather, to already respond. But I am concerned with the 10% that say no, because if, you know, that is reflective of the full school and there would be 60 students and I don't want to lose 60 students from this district. So it was important that we.
And about that, we will, we will make sure that we get higher, the weather, the weather killed us the last two weeks with that, you know? My goal was to get 100% of the surveys back. And we were following up with phone calls for people that didn't send them, you know, to get, to make a complete picture for that. So we'll make sure we do that.
But, but in any case, it, it will be important that we do have the opt-out options. So we say, well, we're not forcing you to send your child to this year-round program if you don't want to, you can go elsewhere. And then my, my next concern is getting assurance that, that affordable childcare options will be available. I've heard concerns from parents that say, if I want to send my child to the, you know, childcare during this five weeks of summer, I'm going to have to pay for 10 weeks because I have to buy a slot for the whole year, or the whole summer and not just the five weeks. And then I have to pay for the slots during the regular year. So I'd like to see that addressed in whatever proposal you bring to us in, in October. And then the, the final question I have for you is, I understand, I didn't realize it until this came up, that we used to have a year-round program at Royal Oaks. And so I'm wondering, why did we move away from that? And what's different that would cause us to go back now to such a program?
Okay, so that was a rhetorical question. And we didn't get an answer, so.
If you knew the answer, I would, I would accept it.
I heard crickets.
I can't speak to Royal Oaks and what they did because I think it ended about 15 years ago, so it's been, it's been a while. I don't, I don't know. I think it's been.
Okay, well, anyway, this is something to put on the, maybe not your personal to-do list, but Dr. Van Huglen's to-do list, to research that for us.
But I, I know one thing that is different. Again, it's the people in the green shirts too, and I can speak to them and their quality. I can't speak to what Royal Oaks had there, but I know it will work well at Wolfmeadow for that.
And I did want, I, I do have, this isn't a rhetorical question, it's just, I appreciate you showing the traditional calendar next to this because it points out again how illogical this calendar is, that we've been forced by the state legislature to live with, with the start date that can be no earlier than August 24th and that we have to end by June 12th. And it, among other things, leads to having a two-weeks Christmas break, coming back for one week and then telling our high school students, take your exams for the year, for the, for the first semester. It makes no sense at all from an academic standpoint. And anything we can do to move away from that kind of a straitjacket on our academic calendar will be a positive thing.
All right. Dr. Shepherd and then Rob, you had a follow-up question that you wanted to follow up with? So let Dr. Shepherd go first.
Just, just to say, the state has made a way that if, I mean, this is not a logical recommendation, I'm not making this, that if we wanted all of our schools to be on a year-round calendar, if that's a choice, then we could make that choice. I'm not suggesting that we do that, but I would suggest that if the state moved to that position, children would be better served. The calendar we have was designed for farm families many, many years ago and that's just not the case. And we're in a habit of having school this way. And it's a, a habit that needs to be corrected. And so I just, Adam, thank you for your commitment to children and to Wolfmeadow and to your folks there. You're an outstanding example for other principals that are coming up through the way. And I'm, I'm proud of the, where you're leading your school and thank you. This is an effort that I want to see move forward.
Thank you. Yeah, with the calendar, when I had the parent meetings and different stuff with the staff, I tried to tell them, imagine we were on this new calendar, this balanced calendar for the last 200 years and I came to you and said, let's change it. Let's change it where you're going to have two months off and your, your kids are going to be with you for two months and not in school. You'd be going crazy. No! Not because of that, but because change is hard and change is a challenge. And I assume many of those 10%, you know, have valid things, but also change is, you know, I went to school, I had summers off. Again, I've never been and worked at a year-round school, been in anything, but I still think this is the right move for the students.
Mr. Walter, did you have a follow-up on?
Actually, it was as part of the transportation discussion on if it was, do we do, we do hub stops right now anyway for, I don't think we provide transportation to any other magnet schools, is that correct? So they'd have to find a hub stop anyway. And then I'm not sure if we're directing people. I don't think we can really just pick one school that students can go, go to. I think it would have to be a number of different schools based on where they're located.
All right. Thank you for thinking out of the box. I have a number of questions that didn't get answered and I just want to, first, I want to know, when did you actually start working on this concept?
Um, back in the fall is when I first started talking to Dr. Shepherd about this. To be honest, I've thought about it for a while because I see the summer learning loss every year we, we see it. And what made me really think, what convinced me that it would work and it would work well was the summer reading camp that we did last summer. Because, so all last school year, we had to tell parents and warn them that their child was in danger of having to go to summer camp, you know, as the legislation came down and people were kind of, well, we hosted it. Wolfmeadow was one of the sites that hosted the summer reading camp last year and it was great and everybody loved it, parents were so excited. I had one student who hated coming to school last year, was a new student at school, literally I had to carry him out of the car sometimes and, yeah. So he came to summer reading camp, third grader, loved it, couldn't wait to come back in the fall, been a model student this year. year. And the mom was like, it's great, you know. It was nice, because that break didn't mess it up. So I started thinking, you know, my family's, my community is into this. They're good with this. And then started exploring and looking at things, talking to colleagues in other districts, and looking at calendars from Wake and Charlotte and Union County, and kind of putting this together.
Well, I applaud you for getting all of this out in this amount of time, even though I know you were really ambitious to try to get it started by this upcoming school year. Still, you've done a tremendous amount of work in a very short amount of time to try to get this concept. I think that by allowing a little more time and getting this out to where the parents can make their plans, I think this will really help in the acceptance and getting us prepared for this. Because, you know, if we can use this as our straw model to work with, this may even work well going to the upper grades. I don't know, you know, middle school or high school, because you can keep, you still have the fall, there's not this huge blank amount of time left, so students could still be active in sporting programs and other things that are meaningful in the upper grades. I have several other questions. And I'm not sure, will the state allow us to do this if they don't pass the legislation that's been proposed by Representative Ford?
That was the point I was trying to make. Year-round schools are exceptions to the board.
So for a specific school, not for the whole district, we could carve out one school and do this. Okay.
I misunderstood what you'd said.
During the intercession weeks, that is going to be your biggest problem in certain times of the year. Maybe not the Christmas time, but some of the other times. And I know you're working with the Boys and Girls Club, you said the Academic Learning Center, and probably several other community organizations. Logan has a community daycare center. And I think that's where the big, a much more, a much larger effort's going to be needed, because, you know, those programs, I know for the Boys and Girls Club, they're maxed out at close to 500 now, and they're trying to figure out how to add more seats and make their program more capable, as, you know, they work with us to try to help out. So as we go forward, I think, looking into that, that's where we've really got to figure out how to draw some more lines around our community partners and getting them involved with this.
So one of the questions on the survey was about what, who they use, so we could start building that list for us to start, you know, see where the most popular ones that are already being used, and start looking at those, also investigating things like the YMCA or other agencies around there. The staff, we also, in discussion, you know, because we are a Title I school, have, had decided that we would also use Title I funds to help at the intercession time, so that my staff that could work it, that would work there, would be doing those things there as well, so that we would have at Wolf Meadow opportunities and things for our students throughout those intercessions, too.
Excellent. Well, I'm looking forward to how that works, because I'm involved with several organizations that help us in that way. And I want to make sure that I do everything I can to get them to be receptive to what we're up to. Were you planning to have Kids Plus during the summertime? I know you talked about child nutrition. Would that be an option during this, as another program, or?
During summer?
During this balanced calendar for Wolf Meadow. You know, I believe you have a Kids Plus program there?
We do. During the summer, Kids Plus, you know, there's certain areas. And Wolf Meadow's not one of the summer ones where we host.
Well, I just put Ms. Probst on the, or Dr. Probst, excuse me. Dr. Probst would be able to answer that question, or at least tell us what she's thinking.
Okay. So what becomes really difficult on this is really finding out the number of students that want to go to Kids Plus in those intercessions, the three weeks. If we keep it around between 15 to 25, we absolutely can run it just as it is. But in those intercessions, if it jumps to, the one number we had looked at was maybe 130, it's going to cost Kids Plus money. And here's the reason why. I can't find, for those three weeks, certified, licensed daycare people that just want to work three weeks here, all for nine weeks, then work another three weeks. The only way to staff it is to overstaff at the other sites during the other times of the year, and swing that eight to nine personnel over to Wolf Meadow during those three weeks. So you probably saw on the PowerPoint that Kids Plus wasn't on there because of that issue. We thought that it would probably cost us about $175,000. And as you know, we rent the space. And when I asked Ms. Klutz, do you want to lose $175,000? It was no. And I don't want to lose 175. That's why I was really proud of Adam for looking outside and going, well, maybe there's a way we can run Kids Plus where it doesn't lose money. That's still a viable option. But we can also partner with the other agencies. So I think he's done a good job of looking out in the community to try to bring that in. Does that answer your question?
Pretty much.
And I also think the plan, as we do our intercession camps, you know, our Kids Plus families that go to Kids Plus every day after school, could still, Kids Plus could still start at 2:30 like it does now for those families that are already involved there. That's not an additional cost there. So our intercession camps, or whatever we're doing with our staff there, we have students, you know, all day like we normally would. And then at 2:30, the kids that go to Kids Plus go to Kids Plus like normal.
Okay. Thank you again for all of your presentation, and for all the thinking that went into it, for each of you and your dedication to this. I'm just really happy to see your whole team gather behind you on this and become a part in this. And board members, if we don't have any more discussion on this, I'll let Dr. Harabak move on. Any more? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, board members, we're going to 4.02 Budget Update. Ms. Kelly Klutz? Come on down.
I'm moving in, they're moving out. Exactly. Good evening. Good afternoon. Good evening, something. So welcome to budget. Today, we're going to start the first of our four board budget meetings. And before we start discussing those, I want to remind you of a January 5th board meeting where we discussed budget process. And I reviewed our budget process that we'll, we have used to develop our budget. And I'll touch on some of our budget processes as we go through these four budget meetings. But certainly, if you have questions as we go through these documents, we'll address those as we go. Also, some other dates that I want to remind you of are, three of the budget committee meetings have already occurred. One on January the 20th, where we talked about capital facilities projects, which is what we're going to talk about today in this meeting. We also had a budget committee meeting on February the 3rd, where we talked about capital non-facilities projects. We also talked about technology. The third budget committee meeting happened on February the 23rd. We talked about facilities' operations, expansion budget. And we also talked about our expansion operations at that time. Our final budget committee meeting will happen this Thursday, and we will talk about our continuation budget. And we will also just do a wrap-up and review and gather that information to present to the board. Okay? So today, we will focus on our capital outlay facilities projects. On Thursday, March 19, that meeting is dedicated specifically for budget. So we're going to talk about capital outlay non-facilities projects. We're going to talk about technology. And then we'll do expansion. And in expansion, we'll do facilities and operations. That, but, that meeting will be full of budget, probably several hours. And then on Monday, April the 6th, will be our public hearing. So we'll have most of our budget taken care of, so that the public will know our position. So then we'll also do the budget discussion on continuation. Those, the continuation items, we can't change much of. And then that'll put us in a position so that the board can adopt a proposed budget. And what we mean by that is that we're going to make a recommendation to our county for funding. We're going to ask for funding for, we're going to make a funding request. Okay? So again, we are going to focus on our capital outlay facilities tonight. And I want you to keep two dates in mind, because our facilities, capital outlay projects, a lot of the information in this document is contingent on our 10-year facilities plan. And we do not have finalization on our 10-year facilities plan yet. But what's going to matter are going to be two dates. One is the adoption of our proposed budget, which is April the 13th. And then there's going to be the adoption of the county budget, which will be prior to June 30th. And so we're working for the fiscal year 1516. And so anything beyond that, those funding years is not really something that we need to spend our time and focus on right now. Okay? So just a reminder, this is how our budget structure is. We have our school advisory teams down here at the base of our structure. Then we have our budget subcommittees. And then our ideas and our priorities go up to our budget committee. And then those ideas go to our superintendent. And then our superintendent makes a recommendation to our board. Our board then makes up a request to our county commission for funding. Okay? The reason we do it this way is that we want stakeholder buy-in and input, and we want to save our board members' time. Okay? So now we're really diving into our facilities, capital outlay project list. And so I want to give you a little bit of background on how we came up with the project list. We started with our prior year list from facilities. We distributed that list to the schools. We asked the schools to add, delete, subtract their list from their list. We had the list returned to facilities, and facilities reviewed that list. Then we integrated the Fannie Howey study, the first year of the detail, into that list. Then we aligned it and tied it to the 10-year planning, 10-year facilities planning committee, what we had at that time. It's not finalized, but what we have. And then it was prioritized by FMD. They considered the following. They considered safety. They considered the schools' request. They considered our system-wide needs and the resources available. So then it was reviewed, discussed, and approved by the construction subcommittee. Then it went to the cabinet. Then it went to the budget committee. In the budget committee, there were, we were, had some concern about the pending direction of the construction projects because of the 10-year facility committee or meeting. We thought we were going to get some more direction. We had not. So we still don't have those clear definitions. But now, we're here at the board, and we're ready for review, discussion, changes, and approval. The information has been posted on the finance website for several weeks, including the minutes to the meeting and the spreadsheet for your review. So we have received your questions. We have submitted answers back to you. And we will continue to work through the presentation. So continuing with the background, is we have the, in the Fannie Howey study, and in our capital outlay projects, there's often a question of, do you want to replace or repair? And this, the next two pages or slides indicate some of the, some of the schools that we may want to replace versus repair. And you can see, the R.I. is the renewable index, and it represents the presented, percentage derived by dividing the five-year needs by the replacement cost. And you can see, indicated in the pink, where it shows that we should replace those schools in pink. Now, you would, you would expect to see schools like Mount Pleasant Middle and Royal Oaks, because those are schools we've already committed to funding. The reason you do not see those schools is because if you look at the bottom of the second slide, is because we didn't pay Fannie Howey to evaluate those schools, because we knew, everyone knows, that those schools needed to be replaced. So you can see at the bottom that they were not including, included in the assessment. In addition to those schools, Central Cabarrus was not included, Culture and Web is not included, the Glenn Center was not included along, and you can, you can read the other ones. Okay? So we'll go on to the capital outlay facilities list that we have consolidated and accumulated for you. We've accumulated five years, and summarized that for you. We have also given you hard copies. We've realized that this is very difficult for you to read. So you have hard copies at your desk. And I'm going to look at the hard copy, too. So if you're looking at your summary document, we want, we want you to realize or understand how we came to, to look at the number that we did. So if you're looking at the top document, the far left, you can see the year indicated, 2015, 2016. At the top, you're seeing the, the category, I've lost, the discipline, the discipline in which we've categorized the project. So for example, ADA Code Life Structural. And then the next one would be construction, the next would be doors. And so at the top is the discipline, all the way over to the total. And then we've also given you a column is total without construction. So at the bottom to the right, we have, our total needs are $252,695,135. And so you'll see there's 1,065 projects listed for five years.
Ms. Klutz?
Yes.
Can I interrupt?
You can.
Board members, I want you to understand that this total at the bottom, the 252, 695, 135, is not an all-inclusive number. The Fannie Howe study has only been updated for one year. Is that correct?
Right. That is correct.
And so we still have outliers for the 1617 year, the 1718 year, the 1819 year, and the 1920 year. Those are not. So this 252, 695 will go up. We don't know what the percentage is or any related to that, but we were, in this budget cycle, we were trying to focus on the 1516 budget cycle. So this, this will change as we go forward, and maybe begin to integrate more and more of the data from the Fannie Howe report into this.
That's correct. And we would expect that a lot of what's in our 201617 through 201920 would be duplicates of what's in the Fannie Howe. And what we do is we, we pull those duplicates out. So it's not going to double or triple, but it will change, certainly as we go. But that is a good point. So as we looked at this data, and we know that our request is going to be $252 million for a five-year budget request, we know that that's a pretty impossible number. So we looked to see what was a number, or what could be a manageable number to make a budget request, and for you to go through and look at. And so we decided to look at the top 10 of each discipline and see where, what that number got us. And so if you look at the top 10 of each discipline, and you pull that, then that gets you a budget request of $80,356,662 for 121 projects. We still knew that that was a very large number, and probably more than we could expect to reasonably get. So we looked at the top five projects in each discipline. And so by looking at the top five, there were 61 projects, and that number is $57,682,700. Again, we thought that number was too large of a number. So we looked at the top three in each discipline. So by looking at the top three, the number was $39,838,813,000. And so that's what the committee decided to tackle, was those 36 projects at that time. We ended up, at the end of the day, we ended up with 37 projects, because we couldn't decide on that last project. But that was the thought as we went into it. So that's what we ended up doing, was we focused on the top 37. So that's how we got there. You're, the next document that you have, The next document that you have is the entire list for you to look at. And it's 45 pages. So, for you, for you to go through at your leisure. Okay? So, but we know.
Carolyn.
Carolyn has a question. Yes, ma'am?
And I don't, I didn't know if we were going to start. I just, how many times are we going to replace a school? Now, let me, let me, let me clarify myself.
Okay.
We're showing under the capital, I mean, under the, the facilities, that very first slide, we're showing Mary Frances Wall Center. That is the old A.T. Allen School. We've replaced that one time. In other words, when we moved out, that was the old A.T. Allen. So then what do we do? We go, we put children back in, we take the EC children, and we put it back in there. Now we're saying, oh, we're going to replace it again. So we're replacing that school twice. And they're saying now, let's replace it again. You know, we've already replaced that school once. And now they're saying, oh, let's replace it again. And, and so, one of the things we need to look at, you know, maybe we're at a point that we need to say, we can't keep doing this. I mean, let's be realistic about this. Maybe with us building some of these elementary schools now, maybe what we need to do is say, maybe we need to build an addition onto one of these elementary schools and take these pre-K children and put them there instead of rebuilding a whole school. Because we're showing to replace that. I'm on that very first slide that we're showing, page, it's actually five. They're showing replace Mary Frances Wall Center. All right, we've replaced, that's the old A.T.
That's the Fanning.
Well, I'm sorry, we may have paid for it, but that, that, that school was, but that's the old A.T. Allen. We've already replaced A.T. Allen one time. Now we're saying replace it again. You're replacing the school twice. And, and, and that school has already been replaced one time.
Ms. Carpenter, that's just the recommendation of Fanning-Howey. That is not.
Well, that, but that's what I'm saying. But maybe we need to look, we need to think outside the box. All right? And with us building these schools now, maybe we need to take them and put them, that K-12 somewhere else. With us building, we're, we're looking at building schools. Let's maybe do that. And then just jump on down to Beverly Hills and replace that. What I'm saying.
That's not our budget request. Take a look at the, the budget document. And let's look at the budget document.
Look at this big document that she gave you. That's what we're focusing on right now. Carolyn?
Because that's not our budget request.
Well, yeah, but it's, yeah, but are, but it's still, is those replaced? Is this other document not going somewhere?
It's just, it's just backup reference documentation.
Yeah, but is that, this document not going somewhere, though?
Which document?
Just for your reference.
This, this number five.
No.
Just for your reference.
Page five was an outcome of the Fanning-Howe study. When they gave a facilities index of the building, in, if you look in this document, you'll see no replacement of the Mary Frances Wall Center in costing. Now, there's some repairs that are listed inside this document to the center, and maybe some renovations to some bathrooms, but there is no replacement of the building. It's just to keep it functional.
But I'm just saying.
That's all you'll see. You won't see anything about replacing the building. And nowhere in this document is there a replacement scheduled.
Well, I'm just saying, we may need to rethink that. That's what I'm saying with us building these things now. That's why I'm bringing this up. Nobody seems to be, I mean, we're seeing this, and that's why I want to bring this up. We need to be thinking on these lines. And that's why I want to bring this up, because when I saw this, I'm thinking, if this is moving forward, we do need to do some thinking on this. And when I saw that, I thought, well, now, this is the second time we've replaced this. And I just wanted, if, if this was going out somewhere, and I know we're doing something on Royal Oaks now, and I thought, if this is going somewhere, I want to make sure that Beverly Hills gets to the top of this thing, because these other two things were already taken care of. And that's why I wanted to make sure, if we are adjusting something, then it gets adjusted. And that's why I wanted to.
It's not, it's not in the budget document. It is not the recommendation of the committee. It is not the recommendation of the superintendent. It is not our recommendation to the county.
Okay, good. Well, I, I just wanted to clarify that. And if we start thinking on those lines, to make sure that that's the case.
So let's go back to the, the top 37 on the list. So that would be the document, that there's four pages. Yes. Yes, the very back of your. And so, we'll just talk about how to read this document. Over to the far left is the fiscal year in which we believe this project needs to be completed. Then, next to it, to the right is the description of the project. Going to the right is the facility in which the project needs to be completed. Next is the discipline, which is the, the category of the project. Then there's the total estimated cost. Then we've indicated whether, if it's on the Fanning-Howe report, if it says NA, that means it was a school that, a school or property that was not assessed. Then there's comments. And then there's a reference to the 10-year plan that we reviewed in the, the board.
Retreat.
Retreat, thank you. And then there's the budget committee priority 1 through 37 listed. So, if you have specific questions, we will entertain those now. I would like to let you know that as we go through the process, we would like to take any questions or concerns that you have as we go. Because on April the 13th, I think it is, whatever that date is, we'll need to be in a position to adopt a proposed budget at that time. And we'll, we'll want to make those changes as we go. So we'll want your questions and concerns and changes as we can get them.
All right, board members. Looking down at Mr. Powell's end, coming up. Anybody have questions? Ms. Carpenter, Dr. Phillips?
Just again, this, this four-page sheet where it says 10-year plan project, what do those, like, A.R.E.F., what do those refer to?
So, this was the, the 10-year planning facility document. You guys have that, ladies and gentlemen. There is a reference on that document. Let me find the proper page. It says project code on there.
It's behind the green, the blue trail.
All right, I, I see it now.
You see it now? Okay. So it's a line there.
Okay. So it's just tying it back to this.
Yeah, it's tying it back to the 10-year plan. Yes.
Just, my only, one, one comment is that on the, the summary list here, it's labeled summary of FMD project needs. And to be, in my opinion, some of the things in the big list are not needs, they're wants. And so I think we need to be careful to, to, to say. I, I do think the ones that are on the prioritized list are clearly needs. I'm a little.
Request.
Yeah, requests. I think it would be safe, requests is a good, that's a good, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Carpenter, do you have any questions?
Not yet.
You need me to come back to you?
Yes.
You all right? All right. Going to the other side. This is the lighter side, right?
The cost estimates, where do those come from?
I'm going to let Mr., Mr. Chuck come up.
Your cost estimates here are based on a meeting with all of your maintenance managers, all of your FMD managers basically sat in, and we all came up with a price we felt was sufficient to meet the needs of the project. And most of these pricings are based on our experience.
So they're on stuff that we have recently done or had done?
Yes, sir. Recently or in years past, and, and with the projects that we're currently doing this year, and we've done a number of projects this year, so we had quite a bit of recent knowledge and data to go on.
And Kelly, you read those, and those seem to fit our past projects? I guess what I'm looking at is, is there, is there typically an escalation cost involved? I mean, this is, because something cost us a million dollars two years ago, is it going to cost, you know, three or four?
We have not included escalation costs in these. So certainly, we'll need to, if the funding doesn't materialize this year, we'll need to adjust those for future years and inflationary factors. So no, we've not, we've not done that.
Okay. I do like this format, and I like the way you presented it this year compared to last year. It's a little more understandable. Can we get a copy of the spreadsheet that it comes with? Is that something?
Absolutely. Yeah, you want the, the Excel.
Yes.
Right, not the PDF.
I'd like to sort it by school as well, so I can see the totals by school. Thank you.
And, and kind of on that same question, with the spreadsheet, if I sorted it and looked for all the Beverly Hills, I know we've got to itemize that need, but we've designated Beverly Hills as a replace, a, a, a facility in dire need of replacement in the, in the near future. If I sorted it and I looked at all the line items for Beverly Hills, for example, that would be a worst-case scenario, wouldn't it? Because we, we would have those needs at that facility, but the better scenario would be to go ahead and replace that facility. So my question is, how are we backing out or how are we managing the, the list of the priority needs with each of these line items? Or would we go to this line item if we couldn't make those bigger changes or fixes at a facility in the near future, but we knew that they needed lights or other matters or issues? Am I making some sense there? How would we manage the ongoing needs even at a place where we had already determined to be in, in need of full replacement, complete replacement?
So we're consciously, constantly conscious of, of those types of things. And I'll just give you an example. So Royal Oaks. So there's a list in here for Royal Oaks that totals about, thanks to Mr. Phillips, we totaled that, and it's probably $3.8 million today. And so, of course, those are things that, that we're conscious of and we're probably not going to do, but they're on the list. And so, we'll pull those off. And, and I'm not sure where they fall, if they're even in the top 37. But even if they, they were, you know, Chuck and his guys will monitor those things and determine if those need to be done. And if they do, if they can be, and he uses a, a term cannibalized, if they can be cannibalized and pulled off and moved to another school and used. And so he makes those determinations as to whether we should do it or we should not and hold off. So he's, he's constant, constantly aware of those things, and we're making good choices.
Yep. The department is keeping their, as well as your own department are keeping your finger on the dial, so to speak, in terms of actually expending funds on facilities that might be coming up for replacement in the near future.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fur.
Yes, sir. I was looking at that wonderful school on Highway 49 called Central Cabarrus High School.
Yes, sir.
And, and I noticed there's like five items or so on there. But the, the one on there about the, the $100,000 for construction, new, new add, refurb, renovate. So, based on what they tell you will determine what else you do. So, based on what they tell you, them other items on there may go away if they tell you you're going to have to replace the school.
Which, which page are you on?
I'm on page number one. Yep. Master plan.
Oh, the master planning. Okay.
Yes, sir. If I can address that for you. What that is about is committing the funds to go ahead and start looking at how we can replace Central Cabarrus. And what we would do is do the due diligence, the research, the engineering, in order to figure out how to place and replace the school as we go, step by step. And this is actually going to be Mr. Burnett's department, if he takes this on or if you approve it. But that's what that money is for. It's not actually construction, but it's more the research and engineering.
Well, yeah, I understand that. But that's, that's my whole point. If the recommendation is replace the school, then the other items on there will go away because you're going to replace the school. So there's no need to fix, to fix ceiling tiles if you're going to replace the school?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Fur, Dr. Shepherd would like to.
It was my recommendation back, when we were putting the bond, bond package together to replace the entire school. At that time, I think the feeling was that the school had a few more years left in it. I think that's what the, the board's response was then. And, and so what this, so if we can't replace it all at one time, this will make sure, and this was on here because I pressed to make sure this was on this list, that we build a coherent new school if it is one building at a time, so that in the end, when it's all there, it looks like it was meant to be there, not that something that was put together there by, by accident. And that's the purpose.
Well, I totally agree.
All right, board members, are there any other questions for Ms. Klutz? Oh, yes, Ms. Carpenter, I knew you would have one. We just had to give you a chance to think about it.
You knew I would. And then one of my questions, I know we have put a lot of money into Concord High with remodeling. We did the, we remodeled the library. We did the, built a lot of, huh?
Auditorium.
Auditorium. We did the cafeteria. And, and you're telling me when we did all this stuff that we didn't do the electrical system? Because right here, it's saying they're wanting to do, replace all electronic components throughout the school, wiring, receptacles, and fixtures. And it's 826,435,000? Because this is Concord High School. So you're telling me when they did all this stuff, they didn't put new fixtures in, new stuff in?
Actually, that's not correct, ma'am. What this is telling you is that in the original 1967 building, that the electrical distribution system, the main feed, the main panel coming in, all needs to be replaced. The reason for that is, most of these main panels and main feeds are so outdated and beyond their life cycle, we can no longer get parts for them. If they were to fail, we would actually have to remove them, ship them to a location in the Midwest and have them rebuild and fabricate the parts individually. So, you're going to incur this cost at a point in time regardless. This is the Fanning-Howe recommendation. And you had asked earlier about how we come up with the amounts. As far as the Fanning-Howe stuff, they're using a very sophisticated program that compares regional pricing, and that's where they came up with this price. So it's not every individual outlet and wire in the building. It's actually the main distribution feed.
Okay. Well, I mean, I was just reading what was on my paper in front of me, is what, and I was thinking.
I can see where you would think that.
Well, I, I knew that we did a lot of stuff, and I'm thinking, all this stuff needed to be replaced? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other, any other questions?
That will be it.
All right. Well, Ms. Klutz?
Thank you.
You're off the hook for this one.
So I will update, update the documents with the things that you've mentioned and the questions that you had prior, and we will see you next budget meeting.
Yes. I just have one comment. And Chuck, just shake your head, yes or no? There was the question about inflation index for the out-years. And as we integrate the Fanning-Howe study into that, since they're using. And as we integrate the Fannie Howey study into that, since they're using an RS Means table, which is based on all kinds of construction information and component information, we will get out-years that will be inflation index. But that, like I said earlier, hasn't been integrated into the later years at this point. Is that safe to say? Okay.
There's, there's that, but there's not, sorry, but there's not, we're not using 100% Fannie Howey, too. And so there's not that component of.
I understand.
Inflation in.
But there are a lot of line items that are not in this from the, from the, for next year and the year after.
Right.
Because he hasn't integrated those yet. Yes, Mr.?
If I could just comment on that. The Fannie Howey and the, the VFA software that they're using to produce these reports, now that we have access to that and we're utilizing that, it actually has a project management component so that we can start plugging all of these projects into it, and we can get that kind of data. And we can also, you can either utilize manual inflation input. In other words, we can determine what inflation rate we want to use. Or we can, once a year, at no cost, they will go through and automatically update everything we have in there based on current pricing for that time.